It is six o'clock. Tony, we're in. Thank you, sir. There we go. Good evening, everyone, and happy New Year to all. It is six o'clock on January 8th, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen to order and ask that we all stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The board is just coming out of a paperwork review session. The first item is the items for consent. We have five items in the meeting minutes. We have an accounts payable manifest, January 9th, $130,039.26, and one for $67,460.74. We have a payroll manifest for December 30th, $57,009.44. And January 11th, we do not have that figure yet.
I have it.
Okay.
It's $50,771.54.
Great, thank you. Item four is an earned time expendable trust fund transfer of $4,769.06. We have a new hire, Kevin Robinson, who is going to be a part-time camera operator. Any items that members wish removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Are there any other items that members would like to have placed on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We will move on. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:15. We move on to the regular order of business. Item one, the fire station bond financing. Mr. Brown.
All right, just now that we know that the figure for the proposed fire station is $5.5 million, I reached out to the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, and they've given me several schedules for the board to take a look at and begin discussing. So I threw out there, I asked them, since we're just kind of starting going through this exercise, I asked them for 15-year, 20-year, 25-year, and 30-year. I think that we're going to hear probably in some of the meetings that are coming up, residents are going to be asking, you know, are we looking at, how many number of years are we looking at, the estimated interest rate? And I, so that's why I wanted to have this before the board this evening. What I didn't realize is that the financing, along with the term of the note and interest rates, they have what they call a level principal and a level debt. And so that just sort of complicates things a little bit more, and I guess, you know, it really comes down to, I think, you know, deciding how many years you want to finance this project for, and then discussing if you think the level principal or level debt is, which is the best way to go. I've heard a lot of people talk about 25 years, and I've heard a lot of people talk about 30 years, so.
What does the level mean, Troy?
The level is, so the level debt, the next column down, is a steady payment. So we kind of start off with the first couple of years, there's a figure, but they, they're all pretty consistent, the payments for the life of the loan. Whereas the level principal, you start to, the principal amount stays the same, but you start seeing the interest amount being reduced every year. So you can see, over the life of a level, level principal loan for 30 years, the interest cost is 3.1 million. And versus level debt, for 30 years, the interest cost is 3.7 million. And there's some schedules there attached below, PDF files, if you want to click on them, try to kind of see how it works out.
Wouldn't 15-year be the easiest and simplest way to go, in terms of like trying to get paid off so quickly, and it's going to cost us so much less in interest?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's really, comes down to, you know, you, you're going to have a building that is going to meet the needs of the community for well over 30 years. So a lot of people would have a discussion about, then we should finance it for the 25 to 30 years. And that way, whoever's, you know, here in the town today, they're going to pay their share towards the cost. They leave, and new people move in, they pick up, and they contribute towards that cost. So everyone, over the next period of 30 years, if they're in this town, they're all contributing towards the, the cost of the fire station. You know, interesting, I had a comment with someone who said, you know, 30 years is like a house mortgage, is your typical house mortgage. 25 years just sounds like it's, you know, quarter of a century, and just seems to sound better than 30. Doesn't sound as long. It really comes down to affordability. Obviously, when you go a shorter note period, you're gonna, you're gonna end up paying a little bit more towards that cost.
The, the distances between the numbers aren't that bad. I mean, I don't, I mean, quite honestly, I'm looking at my home value, and I'm seeing a $40 difference between a 25 and a 15-year note, but we're saving so much money. I mean, we're, we're paying half the interest on a 15-year note versus a 25-year note. And it's only a $40 difference. And I'm not saying that that's how everybody should feel, but my opinion, I think that that's, that's something I'm willing to pay to save the interest, and to save the length of that loan.
And normally, I'd agree with you on a lesser dollar amount. Think of it from somebody that's been in town for 30 years, probably on a fixed income, probably retired. A $375,000 home at 20 years is going to be $200 a year. And that's probably more of the average cost of a home in this town. I think that's about as high as I would go. Agreeing with you that I want to pay the least interest possible, but I think we also have to consider the fact that a $300,000 home value is kind of low. And not too many of us would fall into that.
And, and also, do we know now, are all the school bonds paid off, or isn't it the last year that we'd be paying on a school bond?
There's nothing left, is there?
Before we paid off last year.
I believe that's paid off, yeah.
We're paid off, yeah.
And the only reason I ask that is that because then these numbers would not necessarily be, these would be the maximum amount that you'd be paying on these, because if you were already paying on a bond, and that bond was paid off, the tax rate would, you know, if you picked up and went in-
If you retire a bond-
And started another bond right away, the impact would not be anywhere near.
But have we seen a decrease in the tax rate-
No, because the school swallowed it up, because they had to do so much of the special ed stuff. So all the money that they saved from paying off the school had to be used again.
So the taxpayer has not seen the savings.
Money never got removed from the budget.
There was, there was no break.
No.
I mean, some people blame them for that, and others, I always look at it as, it's unfortunate because we came off of a bond and got no benefit.
Yeah, that's too bad. Other comments? So Troy, basically, I'm sorry, I'll go back to comments, but we need to know before, or you want to discuss it with the Budget Committee?
I think, you know, this will be discussed tomorrow, and I'd be interested in having a little conversation about this, get some feedback. I think you'll hear some, maybe we'll hear some feedback at the public hearing.
Sure.
The way the warrant article is written right now, which is standard language, as I understand, it, if the article passes, it, it grants the authority to the Board of Selectmen to go out and negotiate notes and bonds.
Okay.
So, you know, this is one example, a traditional way using municipal bond bank, but I also learned, the fire chief has been in touch with some communities, and he's learned that the town of Milton, actually, the company that they were using to do lease purchasing of their fire engines, they offered the ability to finance the construction of the, of the fire station. And they were able to get a better interest rate than they were through the bond bank. So the way the warrant article is written, it's, it's not restrictive to just the bond, you know, the municipal bond bank, it, you can go to, for private notes as well.
Okay, that's good.
So it's, but it's something, I'm sure this is going to be a discussion that we're going to start hearing a lot about.
Troy, is it safe to say on the level debt, that the 15 and 20 for the, the home value cost is swapped to 156 and the 177?
Yeah, it should be the other way around.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look, maybe I do.
It wouldn't make sense otherwise.
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on bond finance? Okay, so that'll, again, we'll have more tomorrow night. Item two, review the 2018 draft warrant.
Just threw this on here to keep it alive. One thing I did learn, there was a question at the last meeting about whether or not the Board of Selectmen was required to provide a recommendation for the operating budget. And I did learn that there is, as far as state laws are written, there's no requirement for you to provide a recommendation on the operating budget.
Right, and that's what I learned-
All other articles, which are special articles, you are required to provide a recommendation.
Because of the fact that is a Budget Committee number. And, and that's what I had learned before, and that's why I said, we do not have to offer.
We traditionally, in this town, from at least my experience of looking back at previous warrants, the boards always provided a recommendation, either in support or not. Now, there's nothing, so there's nothing requiring you, in the state law, to provide a recommendation, and there's nothing for you that says that you can't provide a negative, you know, recommendation, so.
What's the will of the board?
To provide a vote?
A, a recommendation or not on the operating budget?
I'm not afraid to say how I think.
Okay. We've done it historically, it's just that I just want to make sure you know that we do not have to do it, because it isn't our number. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Do you want to make, you want me to make a motion for the total value, or the-
To either approve, recommend or not recommend Article 5 for the operating budget?
I make a motion that we recommend Article 5 for the operating budget.
Moved by Mr., moved by Mr. Perry? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Further discussion?
It says our tax rate will be 51 cents per thousand.
Estimated, estimated. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Now, the bond, we, do, we, do we do that now, or?
Uh, yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve Article 4, Fire Station Bond.
Moved by Mr. Perry?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries 4-0-1.
No, 3-1-1.
3-1-1.
Abstain.
I voted against it.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Okay. 3-1-1. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I guess that's it for the warrants, right?
Yep. That's it.
Okay.
Actually, I got a question.
Sure.
Since I was the one that was such a stickler on this, because I didn't want us to have our road bond put out there for 200K again, like we've had in the past, because I didn't want to be walloped with the fire station and the road bond in the same year. I wanted to give people a break. We have no taxation on the fire station this year. Do we have interest in bringing back the 200K for the road work?
I would, because I would then turn around and say next year, that we should take a year off to absorb the first year of the fire station bond.
Now, do you want to put it in the form of a warrant?
Well, the only comment that I have is, the board has a right to do it, but the Budget Committee, you know, they've, they've acted on everything. They've, they've got a package together right now where they've met the tax cap, which has nothing to do with this board. But it does put them in a position where now they have to revisit.
They would go against it.
They would vote against it. I would expect them to vote against it, because we added on last second like this, I would expect them to vote against it. And it's not because I'm trying to screw them, that has nothing to do with it. I just think that it's all about balancing our payments. And I think the first year we absorb a payment on the fire station, we should probably back off for something big. And I picked the road work, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
And you assume that we're going to have a payment in the first year?
Yes, I did.
I'd be in support of it, bringing it back.
I don't have an issue with that neither.
Just take the regular, the same wording we've had before, and we resort it back, and let the Budget Committee know.
And I always wonder why we got rid of it, because we need to do it every year.
And we have a meeting tomorrow night with them, they could take that action up after the presentation.
Okay, you have a motion?
Well, we don't have it written in front of us, but I would make a motion that we would reinstitute the draft warrant article for the $200,000 towards road work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel to reinstitute the warrant for the road work due to the fact that there would not be any payment for the fire station bond this year. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Okay. Surplus property, voting booths. Mr. Brown?
So I just wanted to request permission from the Board of Selectmen. As you know, we've been, the town clerk and I have been trying to update our voting booths to a newest, new style, which is much easier to store, much easier to set up, much easier to break down. Terry, this year, when she went to conference, was talking to other communities, and they're all purchasing these new booths. She was talking to a town clerk from the town of Middleton, and that clerk had learned that, you know, we're going to have these booths that are basically surplus, and had indicated that she would like to take the booths off our hands, and use our booths to use some of the parts from them to fix some of the ones they have, and, you know, some of the ones that are still decent, utilize them. So they would be willing to come down here, pick them up, haul them away. This will allow us to empty out the trailer, sort of go in and do a big clean out of the trailer, and, you know, get it ready for the March election. So it's town property, only the Board of Selectmen can authorize the disposal of surplus property.
So we would just need a motion to do that. Okay, members of the board?
I'd move to donate the town's old voting booths to the town of Milton.
Moved by Mr. Brunel to donate the town's voting, old voting booths to the town of Middleton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, Mr. Bork. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, so with all the voting booths that we're getting rid of, we have all new booths in place to replace those?
So we have, we've ordered another set, and in the budget, we've got some earmarked for ordering. We have enough now for the election in March. And with the tabletops, yeah, we're, we're all set.
It's going to make cleanup so much easier.
How many more will we need to purchase, let's say, for the next presidential election?
Um, the presidential- I, I can't answer that, but I, you know, when I talked to Terry about it, she, when she was doing the calculations, I think she was comfortable that we had enough booths for, for all the elections, so.
I have a question. Are you including the handicap ones, which we only have two of, I think?
She was going to keep the handicap.
Keep, okay. I didn't hear that in the lectures.
Yeah, those are actually pop-up, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Sir?
So when a town donates something, do they get to write it off to the end of the year?
Because we don't pay taxes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Hopefully, we get a, we get a thank you letter from the town of Middleton.
I expect a thank you letter from the town of Middleton, I tell you, because of what those things cost to buy.
Okay, next item, review of accounts receivables. Mr. Brown?
Okay, we've not taken a look at our accounts receivables in a while, but where it was year in, I wanted to bring the board up to date on where we're at. As you recall, we adopted accounts receivable write-off policy back in June 2016. At that time, that was the recommendation of our, our auditors. And we did write off a, a large amount of back overdue ambulance bills that were determined to be uncollectible by our collection agency. So that was, and that was noted by the audit this year, when they came in and met with the board. As of the end of the year, the, the first, supposed to be the fire special detail, we have no outstanding bills. The Police Department Special Detail Fund had $4,305 of outstanding bills, but those were companies that we do business with every day, and we kind of know that through the process, the paperwork that you submit to them, and they're going through their head offices, it takes a little while to get your payment. But the companies that we've done business with in the past, and had some problems with collection, have all been paid in full. And the ambulance, right now, we have a total of $36,900 that is still outstanding. This amount goes back to 2012, and those are all actively being managed by the collection agency, or there's been, you know, a report filed against the individual's personal credit report. So at some point in time, we rely on our collection agency to come forward and identify accounts in 2012, maybe 13, where they think they've aged to the point where the board should consider writing those off. But we're not at that point as of right now. So again, this was just for information, no, no BOS requirement, action required.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you, Troy. Item five, deliberative session, legal counsel representation.
Just, I had a conversation with our legal counsel, our Inspector Morgan, which reviewed our draft warrant articles, and, and I was trying to coordinate if someone from their firm could provide us with legal representation at deliberative session. She wrote, she actually called me, and we had to discuss something, and she kind of laughed and said, you do not need legal counsel at your deliberative session. This is straightforward warrant articles. But she said, if you want to discuss this with the board, we can make sure we have, we'll arrange for representation. And we did this a couple of years ago, where Laura was not able to attend our meeting, and they used another firm. So I just wanted, I told her, I said, I suspect that my board's going to want representation there, especially since we have a, a bond article listed. But I wanted to just run it past you, make sure you, you definitely want legal counsel there and-
I, I really, we never know what's coming up, and I'd rather personally have someone able to answer than, you know, to, in front of all of the public and watching, not have the answer to a legal question that we, that they may need to know while they're, you know, delivering.
Every year, we have at least one question.
That's exactly right. Every year, we, we've had to-
Yeah, I've never had Laura just come forward and be that straightforward, saying, you don't need legal counsel this year. But, so I just wanted to share with the board, I knew that would be your response.
I'll take consensus of the board, or?
I'm with him. I think we should have.
Okay. Why don't we arrange to have some, okay. Okay, item six, winter maintenance on 3A. And I will defer to the road agent again, too, only because I'm thinking that he may have gotten a couple of calls. This past storm, no, I understand, was very unusual. It took four and a half hours for the first state maintenance truck to come out, to, and there was at least three and a half inches of snow on the roads.
You don't get six, and they're not coming.
Huh?
You don't get six, and they're not coming.
Yeah, well, we, we had discussion, and that, that's not the case. That's, but in any event, I told, I asked Troy to put it on the agenda, because you called over there, Troy, right?
I called over.
And I called also.
Yeah, when I called, because you had called and said, 3As and not in good shape is about at least over three inches of accumulation on the road. So I called District 5, received their dispatching. They checked, they made their calls, called me back, and said, yeah, they've just dispatched plow trucks out per their policy. There's a certain amount of accumulation. And I think the time of the day. The time of day before they will dispatch plow trucks out on their roads.
Well, and then I, I called and spoke to the guy that was at the meeting with-
Oh, you did?
The director, because I'm watching, I'm saying, you know, by the time this truck came by, the northbound lane of 3A hadn't been plowed, wasn't plowed until 11:40. Now, that's almost five hours into a, a storm. So I called, and I got to talk with him, Rich, I think, he was-
Yeah, Richard, Radwansky.
And I said, our town administrator was told that you don't come out until at least it's three inches. He goes, that is not true. I went, okay. I said, well, I need to tell you, you know, I told him the situation. And he said, well, it takes a while. And I said, I understand. I've lived on the road for 40 years. I know exactly when, and how, and how many times that they've done this. I said, I need to tell you that I'm going to bring it up to the board, and because we've received other complaints about 3A also that day. And, and he said, well, that's not the case, you know, they, I said, okay, well, there's two different stories here. And I said, you know, it might just behoove us to just write a letter expressing our concern, that if that is the case, that with the amount of traffic that we have now, that it's probably doubled in five years, that it is, you know, when you have the city of Manchester that had plowed their brown app right to the line twice, and the state hadn't come out yet, I said, that, that's totally unusual, totally. And so I suggested that I don't, if, if the board's okay with it, I could write a letter suggesting that we're not necessarily pleased with it of late, with the time it takes for them to, once they get on the road, the maintenance is beautiful, they do a great job.
For the amount of traffic we get on that road-
Oh, it's incredible. I have, I don't think they know how much traffic is on the road. That's the problem.
How they don't, they, they've had mess-
So they're on the Mammoth roadside, a Londonderry there, so.
Well, they wait to hear from them. The Londonderry shed waits through the Bedford shed. So is it okay with the board if we, if we put together a little nice letter requesting information as to the winter upkeep of 3, all right, Troy, I'll work with you, I'll throw something together in a minute.
Now, you guys can't touch that, correct? So if you're, if you're coming off page-
Turn it around, with the plow down.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't want us on it, throws them off. And I can understand. They, they go up the middle, they don't salt each lane. They go up the middle, dump free dump all the way up. You get that kind of money, I guess, doesn't matter.
Okay, that concludes the regular business. I will open the floor for public comment. Mr. Penciaro, did you, is there anything you'd like to?
I'm just going to, I wanted to review the sidewalk things, but I'll just cover it, I guess, in the TA report.
Okay. All right, Administrator Report.
Okay. Yeah, so there's been some discussion with sidewalk maintenance, and I've heard this for a couple of years now, whether the- whether the town should be doing the maintenance, or we continue to contract, uh, the winter maintenance of our sidewalks and the bike path. So I, um, talked with the road agent, Jack, who's here this evening, and, you know, we discussed what's been done in the past, what we're planning to do in the future. And there's, you have to keep in mind that it's not just the bike path that we have in our community, we do have some sidewalks that, um, lead to our school system, so we believe we have about ten miles approximately of bike path and sidewalks that we maintain. The community, uh, I think, I think everyone's very, uh, aware that our community's very active, uh, with the bike path. Um, there are people that are, during the storm, you'll see people walking the bike path, and you'll see people immediately following a storm using the bike path. There's sort of an expectation in the community that the bike path will be maintained, um, throughout the storms and, and sh- very shortly after the storm, so. I don't mean that we, we maintain it during a big storm event, but, um, people do use the sidewalk during storm events, I've seen it personally. And they use it, you know, in the evening, at night, um, so currently right now, the contractors that we've used, uh, in the past few years have had a snow blower, which is the, the po- the sidewalk or the bike path is about six feet wide. The snow blower does a really good job, um, going down in one, one pass, it can blow the snow in areas where, um, you know, it's sort of strategically located, because if you, if you know the path, it, it winds, it curves, it's narrow, it's close to fences, it's close to guardrails, it gets close to the road, it goes back into the woods. And so the, the operator is constantly, uh, changing the direction of where we're placing the snow. When it comes to an intersection, a snow blower will break through the bank very clean and proceed forward, and, you know, you won't even know that the snow blower was there crossing our roads. So the practice, um, it's a good, clean, efficient way to maintain, uh, sidewalks and bike paths. Historically, the cost, I went back and took a look at costs, and so we went back to two thousand thirteen, and the cost was six thousand five hundred, in fourteen, we paid seven thousand eight hundred, in fifteen, nine thousand six hundred, sixteen, eight thousand five hundred, and last year, two thousand seventeen, seven thousand dollars. I think we might still be missing, uh, a couple bills that, um, happened at the end of the year, which haven't been processed yet. So you can see the range, uh, for contracting out the winter maintenance of sidewalks, obviously depending on weather, but it can range from sixty-five hundred up to almost, uh, ten thousand dollars a year, given, uh, the amount of snow events we have in any given year. So in talking with Jack, we, definitely the highway department could do the maintenance of the, of the bike path and sidewalks. But it would change, uh, the way that the maintenance is performed, it would be a low priority for the department. We're still gonna focus all of our manpower and resources on our roads and our municipal parking lots. That would be the number one priority for the department. Once all of that work is done, we would then, um, focus on the bike path and sidewalks. And we can't really promise you when that, um, would be completed. Obviously, the department's going to try to do it as soon as it can, uh, at the completion of a storm. But there are still a lot of work to be done, you know, crews will work until, it, it always timing of the, of the storm event, but if it's a typical night event, and we close down at three, four in the morning, we're gonna go home, gonna come back, still do some cleanup, and then probably get into the, the sidewalk and bike path. The equipment that we have is a, a pickup truck with a V plow, we have a one-ton plow truck, and we have a backhoe. All of which would be, um, used depending on what we have for, for, um, manpower, and where the equipment's being used at a certain given time. What I didn't know, and this is where, you know, feel free to ask Jack questions, is one would assume, I always assumed, that it'd be easy to drive a, a plow truck, um, a pickup truck, down the bike path. You know, it just seems to be simple, right? But apparently it's not that simple, um, because one, you need to sort of maintain, uh, for, to make the plow work effectively, you need to maintain a certain speed, so that the snow can, um, fly off the, the plow. Jack has also informed me that as he slows down, and is just sort of trying to, um, drive at a low speed, there were times when the plow can, the truck can actually be pushed to the side, you know, and you were telling me today, you were trying to clean up something, and the front wheels are jumping, so you know, it's, pickup trucks are not tractors, they're not heavy equipment. Usually there's a little momentum going on when you're, when you're plowing. And again, we're not talking about the two-inch, three-inch storm, you know, every storm's different. Um, but with that being said, you're gonna have a lot more work when we're crossing the intersections. You know, when we come through with a plow truck or the backhoe or the one-ton, we're gonna bring a lot of the stuff into the road, we'll have to be cleaning it up. It's not gonna be this nice clean cut, uh, like a snow blower does. And all the areas where the path gets narrow and gets close to landscaping, fences and stuff like that, you're gonna have some problems with the placement of snow if you have large accumulation, the winter's when you have large accumulation, so you are gonna be, um, dealing with, with that. But with all that being said, the department can do it, I just think that if that's the, if that's the direction the board wants to go, that we need to be, um, just aware that the quality of the work, the timing of the work, it may change. And there are people I know in this community, like I said, who are out on that, the bike path, um, immediately after following the storms, and they're, you know, enjoying that bike path, and you could get some complaints. That's not to say that the department, um, isn't gonna perform this work without anyone noticing anything different. But my guess is the size of the department, the equipment that we have, um, you are going to see a change in the, the quality of the work and the timing of the work. And Jack, you're more than welcome to offer anything I didn't.
I often see him time. Absolutely, they're charging seven hours. I was, I'm, I'm gonna be positive, uh, that's my New Year's resolution, I'll be positive here. Seven hours.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Three times, we got charged seven hours to do the bike path. There's no way it would take seven hours with a plow truck.
No, I'm not saying seven hours with a plow truck, what I'm talking about is, let's just go to, uh, Griffin Memorial School. We don't have a piece of equipment that'll fit on the sidewalk, so what do I do if we decide not to snow blow anymore?
I don't have problems.
From Hildred, from Hildred.
Wait a second, Griffin Memorial?
Yeah.
That's a school, they take care of it.
No, they don't.
It's our road.
There's a sidewalk that runs down Pinecrest from Hildred. I've been called on the carpet a couple of times because it wasn't done as on, at a school, times. Uh, all the way down, goes around the curve, and goes right up to the school. Right to the first park, uh, first area into the school. We can't get on it, you can't get on it with a pickup truck, it's not wide enough. Can't do it with a loader.
What about the piece of equipment that we bought with the giant snow blower to do the sidewalk out here, that it's too big to do the sidewalk?
It's not too big to do the sidewalk, it just plugs all the time, breaks, sheerpins, that's one of the issues that thing has.
So we bought junk. We spent forty thousand dollars in the last five years plowing the sidewalk, we could own a skid steer by now. Where do you own a skid steer?
Well, you can't use that skid steer.
No, you can't use that one, but we could, we could have with the forty thousand that we've spent. The point I'm making is there's other ways to do it, I mean, if, if this, we have a piece, we have the Kubota, and that doesn't work either?
No, but, snow blower isn't powerful enough to push a big, heavy snow.
And of course.
It'll do the little sidewalks out here.
Right on the edge of the road, you're gonna get that heavy snow, because that's where the plow, especially on.
We're, we're adding to it when we drive by on the plows.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of those bike path areas are so close to the road, that as a plow goes by, it just buries that bike path. And that's one of the reasons.
I saw that tonight coming down Albuquerque when.
And that's one of the reasons why we went to snow blowing, because that snow blower will eat right through that, blow it right away. And he can centrally, he can locate where he wants to put it, as he gets to that intersection.
Did you, did you really argue that doing it with the snow blower may not be better? I'm not gonna argue that. My, my thing is, is we have a three-inch storm, I mean, we used to.
Oh, I, I agree with you there.
And I'm not saying fly, but we used to rip right up and down the path. And you'd see that plow truck coming back down the other way, after going all the way to the south end and back in twenty minutes.
I wouldn't argue that point with you one minute.
And I don't have any issue, if it's a large storm that you would contract it out to do the snow blow, that would make sense.
That's how it's started.
The walkway that goes from Griffin to the, the middle school and then back, I don't have a problem with that, if we don't have the equipment to do it, but it just seems foolish that when we're writing out bills at seven hours to do a bike path for a four-inch storm.
The problem is, is if you don't, if you don't have a contract that's consistent, how are you gonna guarantee the guy's gonna come?
That's, that's, I was just gonna say that.
Snow, there's no guarantee with snow. How do we have a contract? We didn't approve a contract, you can't guarantee anything with snow either.
We have a gr- uh, a plowing contract with all our drivers, that, that plow for us, have for years.
But it, it doesn't necessarily guarantee the snow blowing part, right?
No.
So in other words, say we had a smaller amount, Jack, uh, of snow.
I understand what you're saying, and I totally agree with you, I have no argument.
Could we not have it?
Point is, that how can you go to a guy that has a forty thousand dollar machine that
That he rents for the work.
He rents out, and you say to him, you know what, today I need, I need that snow blower, you go down and do A, B, and C.
You can't guarantee.
Three, with three storms committed, an inch and two apiece, and I say, I don't need you today, and I don't need you tomorrow, and I don't need you the day after. So his, his machine that he's got forty, fifty thousand dollars tied up in, sits there, he makes no money with it because he's committed to lich fail. He's not gonna do that.
It's costing him about nine hundred dollars a month to rent that machine.
Well, he owns, this, this one is owned, I heard.
He owns it? I thought he rented it from, uh, Andy, no?
I think he bought it, I'm not sure, couldn't argue that point.
But, but a seasonal rental's nine hundred dollars.
Either way.
For a buck cap or a skid steer.
Okay.
I'll do whatever you ask me to do, I, I have no problem with it, and it makes sense what you're saying, Steve, but how do I get around that, that issue? Do I say, okay, I only want you to do it when it's heavy snow, he's not gonna do it, he's just the guy, if he does, I'd be very surprised.
Find somebody else that'll do it, to do the, to do the walkways between the schools.
Unless we own it, unless we own the gear, there's no way you can guarantee the heavy equipment will be available. It's one thing if we have the gear, we don't pay the guy to do it.
We're fortunate with our drivers that we have that plow for us, their trucks stay here, they don't go anywhere. They're here all year, every year.
It would cost us thirty-six hundred dollars to rent the machine for the winter.
With the snow blow?
With the snow blower attachment, yeah.
Okay, so then you are, then you're gonna pay the guy to do it.
That's foolish, you're gonna pay forty dollars an hour for a guy to run it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I think you, you're damn.
We pay our guys forty dollars an hour to run equipment that we own. Yeah. We pay seventy dollars for people to come in with their own.
Correct.
Yeah. I know.
So what's the, what's the option?
I mean, I would say that, you know, we, we were talking about buying a, a machine for, um, for the recycling center, because their machine's getting older. And do we have to? It's a lease. Do we, oh, it is. We lease them for five years, turn them in and get another one.
Yeah. That's a lease purchase, I mean, one of the things.
Well, it's a lease purchase.
There's, there's a lot of different options, but one of the things that, that Jack and I had been talking about before this issue even came up, was maybe taking a look at, um, some type of a tractor. The Kubota tractor doesn't really do what we want it to do. Do we find the right-sized tractor so that we can get back to our roadside mowing, and be able to use it in the summertime for roadside mowing, spring, summer, and fall, and have the, uh, a blow, you know, a snow blower attachment?
On the front or back of it?
So like a. I already told you how to fix the roadside mowing, and I said, price out one of those arm mowers, that's gonna rip down all the shrub and the gra- and the, the scrap and everything?
Well, state finally got theirs.
Yeah.
They took a lawn. The articulated, aren't you talking, yeah.
Well, that's why you, sometimes you can have a, there's a tractor that you can have, um, you know, with a cab, they can have the arm, they can have the snow blower, they can have an offset, um, what do you call it, the bush hog, this sort of an offset.
Well, how about this, probably for next year, could you research that?
Well, this would be the year to do it.
Multi-purpose tractor?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying, this year for.
Next year.
For next year's town meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we will, uh, we understand, thank you for, you know, clarifying.
I mean, he deserves to get every tool possible to do the job, so I mean, if we can buy something that's like a multi-used machine, that's perfect.
Originally, that's what we thought the Kubo, that little Kubota boys was doing, but we weren't planning on, but, when we bought it, to do the bike path.
Right.
That was not the intent.
Right.
Yeah, and it's just timing, I mean, I threw an email out there, just giving the board an up, a, a heads up, that the skid steer at the recycling facility had broke down. I had been talking to Dave Mellon about, um, he's been talking to me, saying, you know, we're getting close to the five years, and what we've done in the past is we've changed it out, so we get the good trade-in value, traded out, lease purchase it again for five years. And then I had a conversation about, I wonder if we kept it, was able to put a snow blower attachment on it.
It's not heated though.
And then we'd also have a backup, we'd have a backup skid steer when Dave is down, but we'd also be able to, um, have a skid steer with a snow blower.
Yeah, but you've gotta have something with a heater and a cab.
Maybe.
I know.
It's not heated, it's not heated.
No, it's not, it's unsealed.
And it's an open cab.
He has a cab. Has been removed because of.
He has a cab.
Hot it gets inside the building.
So you can't put that.
Cab is upstairs, you can put it all back together if you want.
Okay.
But with all that being said, I'm not so sure what a skid steer will do for you versus a tractor.
Something that's useful for me, other than for maybe on the bike path.
Right.
Because one is, if you, we're gonna utilize that on a, on a project where we're putting in a manhole or whatever, I gotta get a trailer to get it there, because you can't run it over the road.
That's why.
I mean, there's a lot of things that come into play, just that shovel on the front of it isn't sufficient for what we do.
Right. The tractor, you can drive it to the site.
Tractor, we can drive, we can, you know, mow the sides of the road, you can, if you had one with the boom, like we've run it in the past, perfect. You can do everything with that one.
Alright, well, why don't, why don't we, if you wouldn't mind, over the next few months, researching that. As long as you know the concern of the board, and if there's anything you can do this year, Jack, which I'm sure there probably isn't, and I understand that. Uh, but know the concern of the board.
You know what, I, the, the guy that does the bike path, I'll sit down with him, I'll have a talk with him, maybe he doesn't like getting up at three in the morning to go snow blow two inches of snow. Never think of that.
You, well.
It may, may feel like a waste of time to him.
Yeah, alright, as long as you know the concern of the board, Jack.
Okay, I'll take care of it.
If, if I know him correctly, he plows as well.
He does.
Yeah.
So it takes him away from other things that he's doing, I'm sure.
Yeah, he always does the bike path after he's done with his route.
Yeah, because I told him, I don't want him on that bike path until we are secured from snow removal.
And by the way, a fine job by personnel.
Thank you.
With the Blizzard Friday.
Yep, it went really well.
I'll, I'll add something to that, and it's also a comment out to the public, that when you have roads, like the wind that we've had recently.
Terrible.
That has blown the snow back into the roads, don't comment that the roads are plowed like crap. Don't call people and talk to people that the job wasn't done right. Put a call in, put an email to Troy, and say.
Or email me.
We had some, some drifting of the snow, could we please get someone out there?
Yeah.
I did that today.
Yeah.
And I put that out there, and Jack took care of it, and it looks great. When that snow was blowing, we at one point, after you were done plowing, had a foot of snow straight across Brenton.
I believe it.
It's just the way it is.
Yep.
It's the placement.
There's nowhere to stop that wind, it just howls up there.
You get two feet on one side and nothing on the other.
I went back up because somebody called me from the next street up on Landing.
Oh, yeah?
Somebody called me, and they said, you did a nice job at the intersection, but how about me? So I'll be up in about an hour, I went up and took care of it all, but.
So just as a comment out there.
It was funny.
We all, we all do the best we can to do everything possible, and Jack did a great job when I put that out to him today. And Jack did a great job when I put that out to him today.
Well, thank you.
Everything's all cleaned up, everything looks wonderful and, and it was, the comments coming to me and I said, well, I'll see if I can get something done for you.
No problem.
No, the crews did a great job and it was a difficult storm. And the public safety personnel did a great job. I know they were, fire department was on standby, police, uh,
Everybody.
Everybody worked well together.
All together.
The employees deserve a kudo again and we thank them.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you all.
Have a good one, Jack.
Have a good day.
Mr. Perry, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
And the entire.
Do you have anything else? Kurt, do you have anything else?
Just a couple of other things. One, I wanted to make the board aware, um, that the New Hampshire Municipal Association sent out legislative alert. There's a House bill that's being proposed, it sounds like it's, it's going to be passed, um, where they're gonna restrict New Hampshire state retired employees, uh, that, you know, they, they can't work right now, I believe it is, they can't work more than thirty.
Thirty-two hours.
Two hours. They're gonna change that now from thirty-two to twenty-five.
Well, I took, I thought it was lower than that, it's twenty or a thousand sixty-eight a year.
Yeah, or the, uh, but it's an average of about twenty-five hours a week.
It got put to twenty and I thought it got changed because of some comments up to twenty-five.
I think it's a twenty-five now, it was a comp, little backdoor compromise, so.
The only towns it affects are smaller towns like us that have never had full-time personnel, such as our fire chief, uh, and depend on retired professionals or to, to fill in, um, that. And it affects a lot of towns and this is gonna have a negative effect on many of the towns our size. I mean, any of the towns that don't have full-time department heads, so.
Cause I understand it, who the cosponsors are, some of our reps. Think Sushi's a cosponsor?
No, she.
She's, I, I thought she was.
Oh, really?
Or on the.
And I'm just wondering if this board should, you know, reach out to the reps that are not, at least we don't know the position. Give us, let them know how we feel as a small community, what it can do to us.
Well, I, I, we have, I think that maybe the board should send a letter to our senator and.
I think at this point, yeah, I mean, they're, they're meeting Wednesday at ten.
Can you get an email up to her?
Emails to them. Yep.
Um, is it a consensus of the board that we send a letter that we are against this proposal?
Yep.
Okay, can you get that up?
Sure.
The board, the selectmen?
And I, I mean, I would send it to all of our reps, right?
I would send it to all, yeah.
Right.
The, um, and so the impact on this town right now, our fire chief is contracted at twenty-four hours. Um, or a minimum twenty-four, he can go up. And, uh, but I have our, um,
There's several offices that are.
Officer Donnelly is work, he works a regular thirty-hour work week.
Okay, if you can get that out to them quickly, Troy.
Yeah, Quorum, School Resource Officer, Quorum.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, there's been some emails gone around, I'm not sure if we've really had a hard date, but this morning I received, uh, email from Jay Whitelaw, uh, who's handling the Penachuck Water Works property tax abatement. And mediation session has been scheduled for February the sixteenth. It's gonna be, um, at eleven AM, I believe it's in Concord. And Jay wanted to make sure that we had, you know, some selectmen that could, could attend. So I know we've sent around, Kurt had mentioned, I believe, that you could attend. But I'm not sure if that date was, uh, firm, so you don't have to, you know, I can send this around tomorrow and find out who's available.
I, I can.
I'm not gonna be.
Yeah, I didn't. I assumed that.
Uh, I'll be back, I will, I'll be available that day.
Okay. And again, uh, from what I've, what Jay told me, they like to be able to have some selectmen there so that's, you know, some, you know, decision couldn't be made unless we had a quorum. Um, but at least to have representation so that they know that, you know, we're pretty serious about this. So hopefully, um, we'll see if mediation works. And tomorrow, we have a stormwater meeting, one o'clock over at National Regional Planning Commission. Continued discussions with having, uh, NRPC, um, really taking a, a big role in trying to help out communities with the stormwater management, um, requirements that are all gonna be coming up this, this summer. So, I've been attending those meetings and I, uh, plan to continue to meet, uh, attend those meetings.
Okay, anything else, sir?
That's it.
Selectment reports, Mr. Brunel?
Uh, nothing, um, budget meeting, meeting tomorrow night and then obviously budget hearing on Thursday.
Mr. Perry?
Nope.
I have nothing, Mr. Bor.
Nope, planning board next Tuesday, right?
Right.
Recreation, uh, tomorrow, nothing going on yet.
Okay, there are no items removed from consent? Mr. Perry?
Are we gonna have representation at the bond hearing? I can't be there.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm out of town Thursday night.
Well, that's gonna be fun. Cause it's our bond hearing.
I'll go.
That's, that's why I said it's the last week.
You voted, you can't go.
Why?
You didn't, you didn't vote in support.
Oh, okay. I got Thursday night off. Awesome. I'd go if you guys wanted me to.
I'll be, I'll be an exeter, I, I, I can't be there.
Well, the, the bond hearing, I mean, I'll be there cause it's budget meeting will be there too, I guess, but, I mean, I'm assuming you're gonna propose, you're gonna present the bond, all the details, the mechanics.
Yeah, so the plan is, um, I've not seen the PowerPoint yet, but the PowerPoint presentation, um, that we present tomorrow night will be the same presentation we'll present, um, Thursday night.
So the chief will be there also for the bond, okay.
Okay, um, next meetings, the budget committee is meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, January ninth at seven PM to, uh, have a presentation on the fire station from the architects and fire chief and town officials. That'll be a, uh, here or Campbell?
Everything's at Campbell.
Campbell.
Campbell Artory.
Okay, and the budget committee is holding their budget hearing also on Thursday, January eleventh at seven PM at Campbell High. Fire station bond hearing is also Thursday, January eleventh at seven PM. And the next Board of Selectmen meeting is Monday, January twenty-second at twenty eighteen. I mean, twenty eighteen at six. Is there any other?
Just a quick question, how are we running the bond? So we're gonna have, let them do their public, their hearing? We're gonna let them do this?
It's gonna be after the hearing, right?
So I'll be following, it's been tough because we're trying to piggyback the meeting.
Yeah.